In this meeting to order, it is our virtual budget workshop meeting, which this is our second annual budget workshop meeting. So I think in the interest of time this evening, we've all agreed that I will dispense with introductions. We know pretty much who everybody is, so we will do that. We have a couple of things I wanted to say before we begin tonight. I want to thank so many people, I won't get into individual names, but our budget advisory committee, our board reps who served as liaison between the board and our administrators with regard to the budgets, our building administrators. I know this has not been an easy task for you to try to hold the line on the budget, and we do appreciate your efforts on that. And our SAU administrative team and single out Molly on this. You did a great job, Molly, in getting all of this material to us, and we do appreciate it. And hopefully tonight, we'll be able to just have a good conversation about some things, some questions that the board might have, and I'll go through protocol in just a moment. We do have some public input tonight, and we have a guest with us, whose wife is anxiously waiting for him to get home, I understand. So David, would you like to introduce Richard Kane?
Absolutely. About a month and a half ago, we received a call here from Sea Coast Public Health Network in coordination with several other first responders to look for a site in the Sea Coast region to be one of what was originally thought to be six sites. I think it's six out of 13. Rich will have more details that have been updated since that time. To administer COVID-19 vaccines and conduct a fixed-site vaccination program. We had originally talked about having the Tuck Learning Campus serve as that site. I got together with Rich, kind of turned it over to him to lead that, as it's more his forte than mine. And in his working with the state, more with people directly involved. He has a bunch of information to share with us, in terms of an update, and the update is going to change probably each day up until the time when the vaccinations actually begin. So at this time, Rich, I'd turn it over to you to brief the board.
Thanks, Mr. Ryan. As Mr. Ryan said, DHHS, Department Health and Human Services, have reached out to us to get a site. But I want to give you a little bit of history before we get going. About a year ago, we were asked by them to come up with a site when we were going to do testing here at the school. That was going to be at the Tuck Learning Center, and that's originally why they called. So for whatever reason, last year, they never used us. They, we didn't have to do any testing there, but they remembered the site when they were looking for the vaccination site. So things have obviously changed at the SST. We're in school. The campus is in full swing, SST is going, the charter school is going, the Y is going. We have buses coming and going all day. So it really became a less attractive site than it used to be, but not completely out of the picture yet, because as you'll see later on, we might have to use it again. So the EHS site was talked about. It's got a lot of attractions up there based on its size, its location, the facilities, the parking. It's just a pretty good site overall to put a bunch of people through. We're, we talked a lot to the DHHS about it, and they understand that it's very attractive now because we're remote. And you all know that we're not staying remote forever. And we're scheduled to go January 19th to a hybrid. So that's going to change some of the things that we have to do up there. But so with that background, Rusty and I went up there yesterday up to the high school, and we met with the representatives from DHHS and the National Guard. Now, the National Guard folks are the ones that are going to actually do the actual vaccination site. They're going to supply whatever it is for us, the traffic control, the security, some of the equipment is going to be there. So they're kind of in charge, and they're going to assign one officer and an NCO and however many people they need to the site to make it run. So what they're looking for from us is a lot big enough to run three lanes of traffic through into tents where they'll actually, it's going to be a drive-by vaccination. So the patient just drives in, registers, drives into the tent. They get their vaccination, they drive out of the tent, and then they're required to stay there for 30 minutes to make sure they don't have an adverse reaction to the vaccine. So we went up there yesterday, and if you're familiar with the high school, which I'm sure you are, the back lot, which is referred to as the faculty lot, is the one we offered to them at first. We looked at it, and then we all kind of went right towards the sophomore lot, which is adjacent to the concession stand of the football field. If you folks understand where you're at. That's referred to as the sophomore lot, and it has a bunch of amenities to it that the other lot didn't. It has bathrooms, it has power, it has internet, it's got a break room, it's got a kitchen, it has refrigeration. It's all the things they need to actually run the vaccination site with. So they, the folks there, the National Guard folks, really liked that part. So we've agreed to let them use it. The, it makes a lot more sense than the other one. So it's smaller, but I think we can pull it off there. We may not get three lanes, but at the start of all this, they may only need one. Then they might up it to two, then up it to three as more people come. Yeah, what they want to do, they're going to start vaccinating first responders and healthcare workers, and it's by invitation only. So they're anticipating doing about 25 patients an hour in the beginning. I honestly don't think we're going to see any general public vaccinations till probably sometime in the spring, based on, and talking to, there was a major from the National Guard. And she's going to oversee all the sites, by the way. And there is 10 to 13 that they're going to do. We're going to be the only one in the Sea Coast, though. Our catchment area for people is going to be the entire Sea Coast. The next closest one is in Manchester, and there might be one in Londonderry. So we, we've, it's going to be a big project for us, but I think we're all on board and getting it done. What they, eventually, they're going to start, after they start with the first responders, they're going to go to the general public. But like I said, that's going to be later on. What they've asked for is seven months at the high school. That's December to sometime in June. Now, the major wasn't exactly sure how long it was going to last. It could go longer than June, or it could go very well, and maybe we're out of there before then. But we did talk about July and August potentially, and maybe having to move the site a little bit to out front when there's nobody there. But, so they're thinking that way, but they're asking for seven months already. Their plan right now, and these are all subject to change. If, for those that deal with the state all the time, it could change tomorrow what they're telling me today. But they want to come next, a week from this Thursday, to set up their equipment. They want to be given vaccinations by Friday, December 18th. So that's a, it's a ramped-up schedule. And before that, they want to conduct one small drill with themselves to make sure that they get it down right, which shouldn't be a problem for us. We have agreed right now to let them stay in the sophomore lot to at least mid-March. And the reason for that is this. When we, when we end up in sports in March, it's really busy right where we've put the vaccination site. It's the stadium, it's the track, it's the access to baseball, softball, and the field's out back. It's close to the tennis court. So we're kind of right in the middle of spring sports. And that's generally the most folks that we have playing is in the spring. Now, that being said, they're okay with staying there till mid-March. I have every intention, and I'm sure Rusty will agree with me on this, that once we get it up and running, I think people will see that we can coexist even with spring sports. And if we can't, they're willing to move to a different part of the campus to still run it from there, but they're willing to move. We're flexible with them, and they're more than flexible with us when it comes to the plan. The schedule for them is five days a week. They go from Tuesday through Saturday, eight hours a day. And the schedule looks like this. Eight to four on Tuesday, nine to five, 10 to six, 11 to seven, then all day on Saturday. And the reason they're changing the schedule is with the first responders and the healthcare workers, they're trying to, because they work shift work, they're trying to hit all the shifts to get the folks in there to get done. Saturday is a good one for us. It's an all-day, it won't interfere with anybody. So we really have to be concerned with the four days during the week. As always, there's issues that are going to come up. I can try, I try to identify some of them beforehand and try to come up with some solutions. As long as we're remote, I think we're in pretty good shape. So up until January 19th, I really don't envision any problems. At 25 people an hour, it's not many people to handle traffic-wise when it comes to that school. We do that on a regular day, if not more, when we're up and running. So I'm pretty confident that traffic for now will be okay. When, actually, and when Mr. Ryan asked me to look into this, this is the absolute right thing to do. We're going to be right on the cutting edge. It's where we want to be. We want to be, you know, out there in the community helping. And this is going to help not only the community, but the state. It's going to help a lot of people. So we want to be as flexible as we can to keep them there and get the job done. And, but that being said, we have a school to run too. And I've talked to Mike about this at length, is we just can't hand over the keys to the National Guard and say, here's your school. We have to worry about the SAU, we have to worry about parents, we have to worry about students, we have to worry about athletes, we have to worry about the traffic and everything else. But I think, no, I don't think we can do it. I know we can do it, we're just going to have to be a little flexible in getting it done. So, so these are some of the issues, and chime in if you have a question. When EHS goes back remote, the times are going to interfere with pretty much our dismissal times. But I've already talked to the National Guard, and there's a couple of solutions there. One is that Mike's already moved the buses to the front of the school, so they're not going to be an issue. Parent pickup will be an issue out back. And we're more than capable, if we need to, is to split the back road up in half, run some cones down the middle of it. We'll keep parents on one side, vaccinations on the other, and I think we can handle it. If you've ever been back there, when the buses are back there, they park side by side, so there's more than enough room to do that. The National Guards also agreed to lower, if it becomes a problem, they'll lower the amount of people they ask that come between two and three. So that's just being flexible on their part. But, so I think that's really the only problem that we're going to have as long as we're remote. I thought there'd be some potential problems on Blue Hawk Drive, but in the beginning, the numbers are going to be so low that I'm really not concerned about that. If the general public comes there while we're still in school, we're going to have to reevaluate that, because that could bring in hundreds, hundreds more cars. But we do have a plan for that, too. We could probably use the emergency gate, maybe Old Town Farm Road, to help us out a little bit. Some of the other conflicts we have are, we rent the building to other folks. We have the farmer's market in there. Rusty, I think we talked the other day, there isn't too, too many other folks renting it right now. Is that true?
That's, that's right.
All right, so the farmer's market, they come on a Saturday. I think we can coexist with them as well, especially if they stay out in the front of the school.
Can I interrupt for just one moment, Rich? Are we going to go with kids coming back? Are we going to be having the farmer's market coming in there? I would, I hadn't heard of any of that going on. I'm a little concerned about that.
I don't, Rusty can answer it. I don't, I don't know if they're there when we're in school or not.
So we had the farmer's market here because Swayze Parkway was shut down. My understanding is it's typically held on the parkway, is it not?
Right.
So I think it's
During the good weather.
It would probably return there. Because I've not had any inquiry regarding farmer's market. We've not approved anything.
Okay.
Had any conversation about that. I think Rich is working on, you know, just projecting with Rusty about some of the possibilities, but we've not talked about having farmer's market at the high school yet.
All right, thank you. Sorry to interrupt you. Thank you, Rich.
And Rusty and Denise, I'm in contact with them all the time. So I think if there's an, if we have a, an issue or a conflict, I'm sure they'll let me know, and we can, we can work it out. What happens if we go back full or to a normal schedule prior to those vaccinations being done? Not really sure if there's a solution to that. The, I can't see us coexisting at that point, at least not on the schedule that they've given us. We could certainly do it on the weekends, we might be able to do something at night. But during the day, when we're back normal, I mean, there's thousands of people there. The parking is full, we're just not going to have the room. But they've agreed to that. They understand that if we do go back to school, that they may have to find another spot. And Rusty and I will still do the best we can to keep them on the campus, and maybe they just need to tone down how many they're going to do, or whatever it might be. But if we go back normal, we're going to have to watch that. Spring sports activities after school is going to be a problem because we are so busy. But like I said earlier, I think we can coexist. I think once we get it up and running, people are going to see that it's not as bad as you might envision it's going to be with traffic and so forth. But we do put a ton of athletes through that, through the spring portion of school. Solutions, if we can't go to the sophomore lot during the spring. I think we can pull them back into the faculty lot and give them a spot to work. They're more than willing to close down their site. Like if we would have a track meet or a big game, for whatever reason, they're more than willing to close down for a day and come back the next day. So, and I think that's just them being flexible for us. They are really happy, they're really appreciative of everything we've done. The major called it the best site in the state that they've looked at so far. So they're happy with it, and I'm pretty sure they'll be flexible in wanting to keep it there. You know, we could go every other day if we had to, so that we don't interfere with the school schedule. And like I said earlier, if there isn't as much people, we could always come back to the Tuck if it's smaller, because the Tuck can handle some traffic. It may not be able to handle 500, 600 in a couple hours, but we could certainly handle 25 in an hour or less. So that in a nutshell is what it's going to look like. I expect to hear from the National Guard, they're going to assign somebody to the school. So they want to come up and look at it again. And right now, I, from now until January 19th, I just don't see it as an issue. If there's any questions I can handle, be
I do have a question. It's more for Mike, actually. First of all, I want to thank you for your efforts on this. I think it's, if we're able to do this for our community, that's amazing and wonderful. And, you know, the only question that I have from Mike would be right now. Mike, when we go back on the 19th, I know we're only going to have half of the student body at a time. And I, you know, so I don't think it would be a problem with regard to parking, but you might also have more youngsters rather than taking the school bus driving to school. So, you know, I'm just thinking ahead in terms of transportation issues. Would you see this as a problem if they take over the sophomore lot?
The parking shouldn't be a problem. The only concern that I had from the beginning, talking to Rich, was, you know, traffic flow when we're back in school. And, you know, we took the morning out of, obviously, it's not, the morning isn't an issue, just, you know, how we dismiss. But if they think they can make it work, that's fine. But in terms of the number of parking spaces with the reduced capacity, we should be fine.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have a question for Rich or for Mike? Bob?
Yeah, I just want to chime in and say, I think it's a great site, you know. My concerns would be around signage for anyone who has not, does not know the campus at Exeter High School. I mean, if they come from Rochester or someplace else, that they stay on 101 as, as, as much as they can and just turn off out there at the exit right near the school. So I think that there's going to have to be signage right on 101, right up to, right up to the school.
Well, what we talked about with, with the Guards folks were DOT supplying some of those, those digital signs.
Right.
You know, trying to point people to the right direction. I think Exeter PD has one still and the DPW. So if we can ask for help if we need it, I'm sure we can get it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the other thing is, would one of our ambulances here in Exeter have to be stationed out there? Or will that be provided?
It's not going to be provided, but at least early on, I don't see the reason why we would have to station.
Okay. Just reaction.
Changes, if we go general public, where you might see hundreds of people coming there all at once, then we might have to adjust. The fire department might want an ambulance there.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I'm going to, thank you, Bob. Thanks, Richard. Paul, you have a question?
Thank you, Helen. Rich, you had mentioned the National Guard liked the idea of some of the facilities that were available at the site, like restrooms, things like that. I just want to confirm, we're talking about facilities that are at the stadium, not within the school building, correct?
Yep, that, that was a big topic. We told them right up front, you're not coming in the school.
Okay.
They were okay with that. They originally wanted the first two weeks to use the school as the vaccination site. We said no. We just have too many kids and that are, that might be exposed, and we don't know who's coming in the building. So it's all going to be done outside in the, in the concession stand area. And I know Rusty's folks can clean that if they need to at night, so.
Thanks, Paul. Any other questions from the board? Yes, David?
I just wanted to add, Helen, Rich and I had talked about this. I also talked with Rusty yesterday and kind of gave him a heads up of what we were planning and asked him to be flexible and anticipate any calls or requests for assistance from us relative to easing traffic flow over off of Old Town Farm Road onto the campus. If there was another way for us to be able to create egress from the campus, would he and the zoning commission and the selectmen be able to participate in helping us do that? And he said, they're wide open to do anything that's going to allow a vaccination center to be set up here in this town. That's only a feather in their cap, so they would do whatever is needed to help alleviate any problems that arise.
Thanks, David.
Sure.
I think it's a wonderful opportunity. The only thing that I would ask, Rich, would be if, if and when, hopefully, when the situation changes and we start moving to more increased students at the school, if you could come back to us just to give us some updates on any changes that may need to take place. I think the board would appreciate that. And David, I don't believe we need to take a vote on this, you said? Is that correct? I'm sorry, David, you're muted.
Of course I am, because I'm trying to be polite, right?
Okay.
Yes, that's correct. No action is needed on this.
All right, then, thank you. Any last questions for Rich before we move on? Thank you so much, Rich. And Rusty, thank you, both of you, and to your colleagues as well. We appreciate this.
No problem, and no problem with the updates. If anything changes, I'll certainly let Mr. Ryan know, so.
Thank you very much.
All right, then. Thank you.
You can go do your honeydew list now. So there you go.
Hi, Rich.
Thanks, Rich. Okay. The only other question that I had, as far as any public input prior to our meeting, we did receive a number of, I'm not going to read all of the letters, but we did receive a number of letters as a board regarding the diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice position, which I know you've all seen. And we can talk about that as we get to that part of the budget. David, did you have any other public input for us that you
I did not.
All right, then, thank you so much. All right, so we're going to move on to our discussion and board input. And I thought we would conduct ourselves, just as we did last year, just to go over our protocol. The workshop, we're going to go through the budget. I thought it might be a good idea to have maybe Molly give us just a general overview. The opening pages are primarily summation pages. And it might be best for us, once Molly is finished doing that, to go through each of the pages, starting with page one, there are 30 pages. But if you had some questions relative to the earlier summations, that would be, this would be a good time to ask it as well. The questions from the public will be answered at our January 5th public hearing. We will not take questions from the public tonight. This is purely a workshop for our board to ask questions of the administration. But at the end of the meeting, we will open the chat box for comments only from the public, if there are any, and we will take it from there. So without further ado, Molly, if you are good to go with just a few general comments, please feel free. It's all yours.
Okay, so the other day, we sent out the packet for tonight's meeting. So a lot of the first few pages are exactly what we saw in the budget workshop, where we are looking at a 2.13% increase above last year's budget. So just want to remind everyone, we have sections of our budget. We have the federal funds, the food service, and the general fund. So the general fund is really where we're looking at the changes tonight. So page two and three were some pie graphs. They're the exact same pie graphs that were included in the PowerPoint or Google presentation that we gave in the, the meeting just a few weeks ago. So it tells us a breakdown of, the first pie chart is the location, so the school. You can see the majority of the costs is high school, middle school, followed by SST. And then the second pie chart is a breakdown of the expense type. So you'll see the majority of our expenses are obligations and employees' contracts. So 44% being salary, 23% being insurance, FICA retirement. And then we have our bond payments, because we still have the last few payments for the high school, as well as the middle schools come on. And so really, only 24% is everything else. So then the next page is the exact same summary that you saw in the presentation given a few weeks ago that outlines the major changes that contribute to the 2.13%. So then after that, what I did is I downloaded everything into Excel and ran different pivots so that you could look at the data in different ways. So the first pivot in here is sorted by location first. So adult ed, high school, middle school, SST, and TLC. But we have a section called "all," and I wanted to highlight that for you because it's a $510,802 increase. And so the, the page after this details what "all" is. And so the, the page after this details what all is. So the largest things that fall in this category are the change in the G-Bex funding, where we change it to the $2,500 per student based off of the 65 students. But then also, we had the projected retirement incentive impact. So if you remember, we didn't, we didn't play through in the individual line items. We played it through in this, the all other section. Because at the time, we didn't want to take the individuals out because it's really difficult to add things back in. So we played it through in the all section. And then in addition, we had planned a reduction of force of three people and that didn't occur. So that negative cost is seen in the current year fiscal 21 budget. So when comparing 21 to 22, you're going to see that negative cost in 21. And lastly is the DEIJ position, the new position in fiscal year 22. So those are the large changes in what we call the all section that contribute to the increase of $510,802.
Molly, could I, could I interrupt for just one second, if I may? Um, when you look at the, um, FY21 budget and, and on, on the page that had the information with regard to the G-Bex support retirement, the chart that you had there, it shows the DEIJ position, $11,961 staff changes. And then on the, uh, general fund all, it shows $86,000. So are they two separate items?
So on the first one that you referenced where it's $11,961.
Right.
It's called staff changes. So it's the decrease in the business education position, but the addition of the DEI position, DEIJ position. So it's those two netted together. So the, the business education is in CMS, not all.
Okay. I see. So what is the total amount then? If we're, if they're, we're decreasing the position at CMS? Okay. And then adding, and so the total change then would be an, would be an increase of $11,961?
Correct, by making those two changes.
I see. All right. Thank you.
Did anybody else have any questions on the all section? I, I thought it was very important to clarify because it is a large increase. But a lot of it is not increases this year. It's the decreases from last year not occurring this year.
Thank you. Any questions so far? Okay.
Then next, what I did is since the major changes are in the general fund, the next pivot is purely just your general fund. And it outlines by category, the changes that we're seeing. So as you remember, we talked about the large change in the New Hampshire contribution rate for retirement. So I highlighted that for you. So almost towards the middle of the page, it says insurance, FICA and retirement. It's a $1.388 million increase. So the following page tells exactly what makes up that 1.388, since that is such a large increase. And you can see right in the middle, the retirement expense for CMS and the retirement expense for EHS is $424,000 and $377,000 respectively. And then SST following that at $98,000. And then, lastly, what we did is we recognized we're at a 2.13% increase. And we were really looking at ideas to decrease the budget, but also hear what the voters have to say. And so I did, we were thinking about strategically how to, how to restructure the, how we fund G-Bex. And so what I did is if we were to put that on as a separate warrant article, I decreased that out of the budget to say what our budget change would be. If we chose to put that on as a second warrant article and fund that out of fund balance this year. So we are looking very, very good in our fund balance at the end of the current year. If you remember, the last financial you received, it looked about $4.2 million was, was available. And we just received about half hour ago, news that we did receive the second sup, or we will be receiving the second supplemental amount. So the first payment we received for the COVID money was $555,800. Um, and then we'll be getting, I think I said it was 65% of that, David, was it what I sent out? I don't have it up on my screen.
It was about 68%.
Yeah, of the second amount. So I believe the total was just shy of $700,000, was it? I just don't have it on my screen. That we'll be seeing in COVID relief money coming our way.
Alrighty. Thanks, Molly. Um, it, it might be a good, yes, Bob, question?
Yes, I, yeah, I have a question on the general topic while we talk about COVID. One of the questions I've been asked is, since we weren't in, in session or in person for a significant amount of time this past year, some monies were saved that were not expended. And it's not easy for the general public to see where those savings are. And I, I was wondering if there's a way that that can be spelled out in some way.
Yeah, we can, we can try to put together, um, where we'd see the savings. Again, the biggest area is probably your transportation, since that wasn't used. But we did, while we were remote, we did have students in the building. So the lights, water was running, the staff are being paid. And if you go back to the pie chart, most of your expense is staff. And
Yeah.
all of our staff were still working and working remotely.
Okay.
So.
So really, transportation and basically is it for savings then?
I mean, we could go back and really take a good hard look, but I think that would be your biggest savings. Because the majority of our cost is, is salary and benefits, and those are all being paid.
Another area too, Bob, would be professional learning opportunities. So typically workshops, conferences, whether they be state, regional, national, nobody went on them. Uh, mostly free because they were, uh, virtual. So a lot of that money was being saved and not expended. It's, it's incredible the amount of money that we, um, we spend for people to get better at what they do. And it shows, um, by the work that they turn out. So there's been a pretty good savings there as well.
Yeah, I think, I think the public just wants to see that, you know, that there was some savings with that.
Um, thanks, Bob. Did that answer your question, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. I think it might be a good idea, um, and then I'll take Melissa's question, but it might be a good idea for us as long as we're on the topic of the separate warrant article with regard to G-Bex, to perhaps have that conversation now. I think it might make sense to do that first. Um, we had talked about, uh, the issue with regard to G-Bex and how they have come up with a formula to uh, have us expand just for the students who are, uh, our own co-op students. And I was wondering, David, if you would be willing to give us just a summary with regard to that. And also, we had asked if we could have some figures in the event that the, the youngsters who are co-op students had to come back to the middle or high school, what that would cost us in the long run?
Happy to. Sorry, I'm trying to get Kim Meyer into the meeting and
Oh, okay.
COVID case pop up that I'm going to have to jump off of for
All right.
this for a few minutes to manage that. The, um, let's start with the, the cost impact to the middle school and the high school. Should um, G-Bex not be able to continue without funding from the subsidy that we provide? I worked with, uh, Lisa and Tim and Sonya. Um, and they came back with, um, very, uh, positive news. And I talked with Helen a little bit about, um, the impact is very minimal. We'd be looking at the need to swing the case manager who works in G-Bex on behalf of our students now is an employee of the cooperative would probably have that teacher move over to the high school. So that's a wash in terms of the cost. However, there would need to be two paraprofessionals at the middle school and two paraprofessionals at the high school. Um, to, and it's about $50,000 per para for full-time paraprofessionals. If, and that's all in, and that's a little overestimating when we look at what their, um, full-time salary is. We always use the top of the scale salary as our, as our barometer, and then a 40 to 45% benefit, uh, added to that. So we have that number to work with. So it'd be about 200,000. Um, for us to be able to, to fund. So what's funny is when we look at what the reduction is that when we were, I think what 162, Molly, is what we would make in a subsidy payment. That's actually less than what it would cost us to have our students return to our buildings um, in order to satisfy their needs. So there is a, a delta of $38,000 in savings if we maintain the 162 or the amount that's in our budget. Some of the problems that we may run into is if we pull this out onto a warrant and it fails, we then don't have that money budgeted in our general fund if it passes. So we'd have to scramble to find it. The other complication is if this budget is voted on a default, it gets even harder. Um, so it's this risk reward type of, of, uh, a situation that we're in. Um, when we talked about the formula with Peter, it was actually Peter who recommended it. He had, he had said when Molly and I sat down to talk with him about the budget, Peter came forward with, um, asking, you know, for $2,500, $28, $2800 per student that is a cooperative student. And we asked him for a roster of the cooperative students. So we would have that number. And it was 65, uh, students grades, I think six through 12. Um, so that number, we went with the $2,500, came out to the 162. And, um, we thought that was a very fair assessment because they are our students and we would be naturally building money into a program for them if they were to return to the middle or the high school. Um, what I noticed today though as well is, um, the opportunity, I know that, uh, G-Bex put in for supplemental public school response fund money, round one. But I noticed they didn't put in for round two. And I was surprised by that because there's a, it was $10 million that everybody was approved to have a part of. And we were hoping that they would take advantage of some of that money that was available to them and they did not. Um, that's just an observation from someone who's counting pennies. Um, so that's, that's where, that's what it really evolved, uh, from. And Peter was, I told Peter, Molly and I talked with Peter, we said that we'd bring this back to the board. We'd make this presentation to the board. And then we wanted to provide an option to the board as well to bring that budget under 2% or removing the dollars from the general, uh, from the operating fund and putting it into a, a separate article. So does that help explain the origin of that?
It, it does, David. What was Peter's response to your suggestion of putting it as a separate warrant article?
Uh, we had not gone back to him with that yet. We wanted to talk with this.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry. I misunderstood you. All right. Okay. Thoughts from the board on this? Melissa?
Hi, Helen. I had, um, a previous question from something else and then this. So I'll start with this. And if I could go back to that.
Well, why don't we stick to this and then, and what I'd like to do is get a consensus from the board and then I'll be happy to recognize you on the previous question. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all right. So, um, I, I have a couple of questions and, um, and I apologize for bringing the cost down. Okay. So please don't misunderstand me. You're at, we were at 280K. Appreciate it that you're bringing it down quite a bit. And I completely recognize the fact that if we were to bring these children back into EHS or CMS, it would be much more costly. What I want to understand, um, I don't, truly don't understand it. And I want you to please help me with it. And that is, how is this different than any child in our SAU that has chosen to do homeschooling or private schooling? Why aren't they getting $2,500 per student, per family? I'm trying to wrap my head around that. So that's my first question. And then the second thing is I understand what you're saying. If the warrant article fails, I, I understand it's, it could be disastrous. That being said, I'd like to say in my opinion, the warrant article is the right thing to do. Um, I think we can't not put it in a warrant article because we're afraid of the results. I think the right thing to do is put it out to the voters, um, and let them decide.
Thanks, Melissa. Other comments on this?
I, I did have a question, Helen, and that was
Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me.
That's okay. I don't, and it's a genuine question. What is different? Why would a G-Bex student have $2,500 follow them? When a private school student or a homeschooling student that lives within the district not have money follow them? And that's the genuine, I just don't understand it.
Yeah. So it's a great question, Melissa. It's, um, I think the, the reason the board's always voted to support it year, year in, year out was that it was originally an SAU 16 school. Uh, was started by Skip, as you know, I mean, you know, the history certainly. But, um, as it has moved through from, uh, the school district into its own publicly funded charter school. Um, I think that, and I'm, and I'm speaking on behalf of the board because it's not my decision. Um, it is something that has, uh, been done by, by the board in the budget for however many years that the school has been there. And, um, they recognize that, uh, it's our students who are attending another publicly funded charter school. The difference between that and homeschool or a private school was neither of those are publicly funded using tax dollars that are appropriated through, um, the statewide tax or the local property tax for schools. So that's the best response I can give you. It's a curious, um, uh, relationship. I've always found it to be a curious relationship. I'm intrigued by it. I continue to be intrigued by it. Um, so what we've been doing, what we've been asked to do is come back to the board with what we believe to be a fair formula. That was one of the first questions I was asked, I think back in March of 20, um, 2017, uh, or 2018 was, you know, how can we work with and create a formula for a publicly funded charter school like G-Bex?
But can I ask you, David? So you inherited it, right? So you didn't start this. So please don't misunderstand me. You're stuck with it and I get it. Okay. It's not your deal. Um, but when we're talking about the public tax dollars, I still understand in this area, people pay $12,000, $15,000, $18,000 a year in property taxes. And their tax dollars are going to publicly funded schools. Like, I still don't, do you know what I mean? I mean, I appreciate the explanation, but I still just, I'm just putting out there, like, I honestly can't wrap my head around it. I've tried to research it and I just don't get it.
Yeah. And, yeah, and I hear that. And, and I, that's where it has to be. I mean, I know you, um, you don't agree with it and, and that's, that's where it is.
Yeah.
No disrespect, Matt.
I get you.
Thanks, Melissa. Thanks, David. Paul?
Thank you, Helen. So what I really want to make sure that we all understand is just the, the situation will be put in if this is to go on a warrant and it fails. Um, assuming that all of those students would then come back to our schools, which may or may not be the case, but I think we have to assume that they would. Um, I understand we'd need two new pairs at the middle school and the high school, which would average out, which sounds like around 200,000. I, is that the, the total of funds that we'd be kind of needing to find in, in the budget in order to make that work? Or is there more? And if, if it, and whatever the number is, if it's 200 or more, would we be able to absorb that? I mean, what would be the consequences of that?
Well, based on the, the input that I received back from the two schools, uh, predominantly around our special education professionals, um, 200,000 would be the max amount that we would have to find. Uh, there might be, be some programming changes, um, alternate some of the uh, opportunities that some of the students have. I mean, students are attending G-Bex because they found that the traditional school site, whether it was a public or a private school, and I'm talking about any student who's there now, um, just wasn't a fit for them. So how would we then recreate some of, um, not an alternative education setting, but just a different education setting for them that, um, back in our middle school or our high school that would engage with them and have them be more successful? Um, this board asked me a year ago to develop some programming around, um, what would we do if we had to have our own program? Uh, if G-Bex was not to be able to move forward. And so we've worked on that. We have a skeleton plan in place to share. We'd like to put some meat on those bones, uh, because we weren't sure how much further down the conversation we were going to go. But, um, I think we have, uh, a truly innovative and talented CTE director, uh, who's a principal. We have, uh, a highly innovative adult ed, uh, director who is a former principal. And we have a lot of really creative people who work in the district that if we had some time to work on a plan and we're given the green light by this board, we'd be able to move forward with a program of our own. we had some time to work on a plan and we're given the green light by this board, we'd be able to move forward with a program of our own. In the school, uh, at the middle school or the high school. But it would be a program that we've already been talking about. That we'd be pretty excited to be able to offer.
Would we expect Dr. Ryan that the, the 200,000 shortfall that we'd be faced with would adversely impact the programming provided to the, the rest of the student bodies at the middle school and the high school, or would there not be an impact?
I, I, I don't believe there'd be an impact, Paul, based on my experience working within this budget for the last three years. I, I would not have heartache over that. I would I would have to do a deeper analysis if our budget were not to pass and if we would be working within a default. I think Molly and I and Michelle will probably have to do some, some hard looks at uh what we'd be look, um, how we would be adjusting our lines in a default to make that 200,000 happen.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from the board? Bob? Bob, you're muted. You're muted, Bob.
Here I am. Okay, I'm not muted anymore. My comment would be, I'm not in favor of this being a separate warrant article. I really think that these students, they are in a special environment which works for them. And that environment cannot be recreated at Exeter High School or at the CMS. And that we no matter what, we need to focus on students. And because, and to have this set out as a separate warrant article, to have 65 students in our district voted yes or no to be able to continue in that program would be very unfair. And I am very much against a separate warrant article. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Kathy, you had a question?
Well, actually, Bob, you covered a little bit of it. I, I was there for the history, okay, of this school and my concern is just what Bob said. Those kids are in that program now and now you want to pull the rug out from under them. I don't think, this should be a lot more investigation and oversight on what they're doing over there and how they're helping these kids. And putting them back in the school with a program that really isn't set up for them. Yes, we could set up a program, but it would not be the same. So I'm really kind of dittoing what Bob said. I don't support it either. And mostly because I know the history of it and I a lot of the parents in there and it's, it's a program that's working for them. And why mess with it?
Thanks, Kathy. I'd like to comment on this because I'm, I'm kind of betwixt and between. A year ago, you know, as everybody knows, we were very frustrated with the fact that we were not necessarily getting some of the cooperation, if you will, with regard to fundraising that we had asked GBEX to do over the course of the year. And we had agreed to go ahead and fund GBEX with the caveat that they would do more with regard to raising funds, do more with regard to reaching out to other districts. Then COVID hit. And there's not a doubt in my mind, I don't know if, if that, well, I, I believe that may have affected what they were able to do with regard to fundraising because COVID hit only a month or so after these discussions that took place. So um I hear what the board is saying with regard, and I hear what Melissa is saying with regard to our continually funding this. At the same time, I'm hearing what Bob and Kathy are saying. That this program, and, and I don't have any doubt that David, you're speaking from the heart in terms of what we could provide for our youngsters at the middle and high school. But having been, having seen that program in action, I don't know that we could duplicate it. At the same time, I'm a little concerned if we put this on as a separate warrant article now. Kind of an 11th hour decision. I don't think that that's fair to the parents and the youngsters who go to GBEX. I, I think that what I would prefer to see, to be honest with you, is for us to leave it in the operating budget for now. And then if we don't see some of the things that we have been promised with regard to, without, without COVID being an issue or any other excuses, I hate to use that phrase, being an issue. We let GBEX know that next year, it, if there is funding, it will be in a separate warrant article. I just, I'm uncomfortable with putting this on at the last minute. I, I think it's something that they perhaps should get a heads up on. Albeit, everything that I know has taken part, has happened in the past. I admire the fact that they have come up with a formula and they have reduced the amount that we have originally provided them. But I would just feel more comfortable letting them know that this is the last year it's going in the general budget. The overall budget. So that's my two cents worth. Yes, Travis?
Yeah, again, just to, to share my thoughts, they, Helen, like you, I'm, I am torn on this. Uh, you know, I, I applaud the the thinking of, of a way to, you know, to reduce the budget and still potentially support GBEX, but certainly understand the risks associated with that. But I'm definitely torn and Melissa's point, I think, is, is definitely valid. Are there, you know, other publicly funded charter schools that maybe an SAU 16 student might choose to go to, but we're not going to, to send money after them. So that, I think that was a good point that, that adds to my struggle with this, but you know, it, it does support 65 of our students, which is not an insignificant number. One is not an insignificant number, but you know, it, it is a very unique program as, as Bob spoke to, and I don't know, I'm struggling with the decision. I think that the warrant article, after hearing some of the conversation, I'm not wild about, just because again, we don't put other groups of students out on separate warrant articles when it comes to funding their education. We may disagree with where that funding is going, but we don't put it out as a separate warrant. We, we, we look to fund their education. So I'm, I'm leaning less towards the warrant article, but I still struggle with, with funding it at all. I do appreciate that at least there's a formula now that makes some kind of sense. I guess I, I would like a better understanding of where Peter came up with $2,500. You know, kind of what that represents, but maybe that's a discussion for a different day, but definitely still struggling with the whole GBEX funding issue.
Travis, I can, I can clear that up. It's the delta between what he receives inadequacy and their per pupil cost.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all it is. That makes sense for now. That's helpful. Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks, David. Thank you, Travis. Any other comments or questions relative to GBEX? Kim?
Yeah, thanks Helen. Um, so I, I agree with the last couple of people who have spoken. And I, I agree Melissa's point is valid and we need to examine it, but I'm really uncomfortable doing it vis a vis a warrant article for the reasons which are mentioned. I just think if, you know, given the fact that our SAU had a part in the origin of this charter school, I think we would have to have a transition plan in place that Dr. Ryan approves of his.
Thanks, Kim. Anybody else? All right, we'll go back to Melissa because Melissa, you had another, we're not taking any action tonight on this, correct, Dr. Ryan? Or are you just, you know, how, how do we follow up on this?
Yeah, no action tonight. This is all building the budget as a team and
Right.
Come your budget for next time.
Thank you. All right. Melissa, you said you had another question relative to an earlier point.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to ask the line about the substitutes. We had 317,501 in substitutes. It was reduced by $5,000. I'm just curious if we saw huge cost savings this year in substitutes and where we're at with that line.
Which page are you on, Melissa? Of the budget?
Oh Molly, that's a good question because we're like 20 minutes ago. Um, give me one second, okay, please.
I think it's the general fund pivot table where you've got substitute expense.
Yes. Is it, I think it looks like this, right?
Helen, excuse me, I have to work on.
You go, David, please.
Be back though.
By all means. Thank you.
So you're looking on the, the pivot table and which.
Oh, that's different, actually. Um.
Helen, I gotta switch to my phone for a minute, so.
Sure, Kim. Thanks. Okay.
I'm sorry, Molly, I need, I need just.
We need introductory pages, Melissa. Is that where you're taking it from?
General fund, it's a general fund page. And it starts with adult education tuition and it actually has, coincidentally, a, a green highlight.
Oh, right, okay.
Friend of mine.
Substitute expense less 5,000. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes. Our substitute expense, it looks as though we budgeted for 317. Next year, we budgeted for 312. And I'm just curious, did we see a huge savings in that line this year?
So I do believe that, I mean, I can let Patty and Mike talk to at the level of substitutes in their building, but I do believe you have significantly less substitutes, correct?
Yes, we do at the middle school.
Yeah.
I actually have more.
But are we talking about, to Melissa's question, are you talking about significantly less this year because of the situation that we're in or just in general?
For the middle school, it's because of COVID. So if you go back since March 13th to the present day, it's significantly less. And it's due to um remote learning.
So if we were to go back to full in-person learning next year, which I pray to God we are, is that going to leave us with a shortfall on substitutes if we take, if we budget 5,000 less?
So the $5,000 less is specifically in the high school. So at CMS, the substitute line was actually no change.
Okay. Okay.
So it's zero change at the, because this, this pivot is sorted by location. So the $5,000 Melissa's talking about falls under EHS. So Mike, I do think you have seen less substitutes than what you were budgeted for. I think CMS has always had used their budget.
Yeah, we, we, we'll be fine.
We will. Okay, Mike, thanks. Does that answer your question, Melissa?
Yeah, thank you, Helen.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Bob?
Yeah, with that same thought, didn't we increase the amount paid for substitutes also?
Yes, it went, well, that was for the current year. So effective this year, it's $15 per hour. Instead of.
So if the $5,000 less is, is still okay for, for Mike, even though the prices we're going to be paying is a little bit more?
Well, the price now is more, so it's, we're paying the 15 now.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Thanks, Bob. I think what I'd like to do is move into the regular budget here, starting with page one. There are 30 pages to get through. What I'd like to do, as we did last year, is go page by page, starting clearly with page one. And if anybody has any questions or comments relative to any of the items on that page, if you raise your hand, I will direct it to Molly or one of the building administrators. Any questions on page one? Paul?
Thank you, Helen. Start, starting right up at the top and, and we may have discussed this somewhere along the line and I just don't recall the answer, but I noticed that CMS specifically, both art salaries and music salaries are down by 26 to 33%. And I just wanted to, to confirm why that is. Is it a reduction in staffing or is it just a change in staff? Or what does that represent?
Yeah, I can speak to that. So last school year, meaning the um 1920 school year, we had 2.8 art teachers and one of our full-time art teachers retired. And um with the rescheduling and whatnot, we didn't have a need for 2.8, but we did have a need for two full-time art teachers. So the .8 teacher became a full-time teacher. There is still art in sixth, seventh and eighth grade. Oh, and music, music, sorry. Really the same thing. One of the music teachers requested a transfer to the high school with the last year's retirement at the high school. And so we went from having four music teachers to three. We've had a little bit of a decrease in, in music. But the music program is still robust and we were able to still provide what we need to with three full-time teachers.
Thank you, Patty.
Was that Paul? Thank you. Any other questions on page one? All right, we'll move to page two. I just wanted to make a note, I did check today with Kat in human resources. So far, there have been no requests for sabbaticals from the element, sorry, from Exeter High School, middle school or SST. Now, the deadline for sabbatical applications is December 20th, but as of now, we have none. This is the first time in a long time, and I think for obvious reasons that folks are not putting in for sabbaticals. But if there's any change to that, I will update the board as we proceed through the next month or so. Travis, you had a question?
Thank you, Helen. Molly, I just want to confirm, or Michelle, in, sort of in the middle of the page, there's staff adjustments and there's a lot of big numbers increasing and decreasing. That was just cleaning up the lines, correct? We were just reclassing some things that were in the budget to be where they were supposed to be. Is that accurate?
The staff adjustments, if you remember, I talked about the three reductions that were planned last year. So that's actually, and it's a negative cost last year.
Right.
But those reductions were not made. So that was the, the plan for the three reductions.
Okay.
And so now it's zero this year. And then the other big swing, which was the retirement, which was the 152. If you remember, last year, we had that savings in the budget. Because with the folks retiring and the payout that we had and replacing them at lower salaries, we didn't put that in each individual line item because it was going to be difficult if we had to change things back. So we, we put that all in the 152 here. So now you're seeing all those lower salaries throughout the different salary lines. So again, it's negative costs last year for the savings. It's zero this year.
Right. So I guess maybe the other part to my question, maybe I should have articulated it more clearly. So an example, like the full-time subs at EHS is showing an increase of 156,000. And the non-instructional aides is showing a decrease of 121,000. Is that just cleaning up where positions were classified?
Yes, that is, that is more of a cleanup in that area.
Okay, thank you. Yep, thanks, Molly.
I said Travis?
Yeah, thank you.
Sure. Paul and then Bob?
Thank you, Helen. Uh, the third line from the bottom on page two, the testing line shows an increase of 11,400, which is a 76% increase. Can anyone explain what that increase is for?
Michelle, do you have that on our line-by-line comparison that we put?
Yeah, the note that I have here says it's the eye-ready diagnostic reading and mouth testing.
And is that something new that we're using for next year or a price change on that?
I, I think, I think I can speak to that. I'm sorry, the, the packet that I have, it's my pages are not matching up with your pages, so I apologize. Like it says, I'm on what page you're on. Look, I have the packet, but.
Page two of 30.
You might have the ones with notes, Patty, it might.
I have the one from December 2nd, it says, budget December 2nd. So it's not matching up, but I can certainly speak to eye-ready if, if it's, this is a CMS testing line or so a, a little, a little bit of information is, so we conduct at the middle school, what we call a universal screener. And a universal screener is that all students are given this assessment. So an example of that would be the New Hampshire statewide assessment. Another example of that would, we, what we used to administer is the NWEA, the Northwest Evaluation Administration in Mathematics and Reading. What we're finding is that with eye-ready, they too have a diagnostic and it's very comprehensive. And not only that, it's that after the students take the diagnostic, they then build an individual pathway for each child to work on the skills and the concepts either to enrich where they are or to fill those gaps in skills and concepts that they're not maybe quite at grade level at. Or maybe they're just a little bit behind their peers. So it's very personalized. So when we looked at both of So when we looked at both of these, and then also knowing that we were piloting Ready Math, it's the same company, Curriculum Associates, we thought we should delve into this further. So last year, we were having some teachers, both regular ed and special ed, administer the iReady diagnostic. So I believe, if you recall, at a curriculum philosophy meeting, we had two Team Two sixth-grade teachers, Aram Zakian and Jamie Cerrois, present to you their data from using that iReady diagnostic in reading and math and showing you the progress that students made, and then their individual pathways. So we've since then replaced NWEA, so we are no longer administering that. And instead, we've replaced it with iReady. And so this is now what we call, students and teachers have a dashboard for each child based on that diagnostic. They now have a pathway where kids can be independent, and they can all be working on what they need for those gap areas or enrichment areas in reading and mathematics.
Thank you. So the increase here represents iReady being rolled out to all students for the next.
Yes, it is all students, right. And so just to be clear, that iReady is the diagnostic with the intervention or enrichment tool attached to that. Ready Math is completely separate as a mathematics resource to support our math curriculum at the middle school. And actually, it's K.A., but.
Got it.
Was that Paul? Thank you, Patty.
Yep, you're welcome.
Bob, you had a question?
Yes, I was, my understanding that there's a business education position being cut at the CMS. I'd just like to know the reasoning behind that first. And then secondly, is what does that do to staffing?
Yeah, so thank you, Bob. So that's a personal finance position. That is, that's our one reduction in force. And really, when we looked at our overall scheduling and program for our students, what we found right now, and even amidst this pandemic that we're all living in, is that our students could really benefit from more social-emotional learning and working with our school counselors, that's their expertise area, to push in in those unified arts blocks and run a rotation of really teaching those mindful habits, teaching our kids, giving them tools for resiliency, giving them tools for when they're feeling stressed and anxious. And that really, right now, needs to be our focus. And we know that within our family consumer science program, there are aspects of that program that is also finance and banking. So we really felt that the more pressing need here is the social-emotional need and mental health and wellness for our students at the middle school.
And staffing-wise?
Staffing-wise, that will, like I said, that position, it's a reduction in force for that teacher, unfortunately. But our school counselors, with their expertise in social-emotional learning, will be pushing in to those unified arts blocks for all of our students.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a quick follow-up, and I won't get into it in a public session, but that does have some implications too that we can talk about with regard to personnel at a later time. So we'll hold that conversation for later. Any other questions on number two, on page two, pardon me? All right, then, we'll move to page three. The question that I had is mainly for Mike, and it's just a general question. It appeared as though the greatest amount of increase here came in the area of supplies for multiple departments. Mike, I was wondering if you could just address that for us?
That's more due to, we've done some line consolidation. So you'll see some of those, some of those supply lines went up, but other lines that are part of those departments went down. So it'll be, it'll come out bouncing. So it makes those lines make more sense and allows us to deal with the budget in a more responsible manner. So that's what that is. So you'll see some certain lines have gone up, but others will correspondingly go down. So those departmental lines have stayed pretty much static.
Okay, thanks, Mike, appreciate that.
Yeah, part of the way I did the pivots in the front is to show that so that I can see supplies under the high school and middle school.
Thanks, Molly. Other questions on page three? All right, that was easy. We'll move to page four. We good? All right, page five. I did have a question about the sped aid at Exeter High School. There was an increase of $26,340. I was wondering if maybe Helen or Molly could address that one for me?
Lisa could probably give more specifics on that.
Oh, thank you, okay, Lisa.
Yeah, absolutely. So what's happening is we have one-to-ones coming up from CMS. So these are eighth-grade positions for kids coming up that need one-to-one services. We have averaging between six and eight new students, that rising ninth graders for next year. And we're not losing any seniors.
I see. Okay, thanks, Lisa, appreciate it. And my other question had to do with the sped legal increase of $40,000 for Exeter High School. I was wondering if you, I'm sure I know the answer, but I think it warrants a discussion, not a discussion, but just an answer to the question.
Yeah.
Mind, thanks, Helen.
COVID doesn't bring out the best in everything. There's been a lot more need for legal advice and legal proceedings through dispute resolution that the Department of Education offers students and parents with IEPs. And we've had more of that. Right now, we have quiet spell, but let me tell you, September was wild. So, yeah, Dr. Ryan wanted to make sure we had covered more.
That's what was my next question. So you anticipate, in the event that we do have more in the fall, you would want to be covered there? Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions on page five? Yes, I'm sorry, Travis, yes?
That's right. I'm just curious, there's a significant reduction in contracted services, sped contracted services at EHS, down 228,000. Are we not utilizing other contracted services? Do we not have the need anymore, or what's the reason for that?
So I can speak to that as well, if you want me to. We have, oh, I'm sorry, Molly.
No, I was gonna say, it's you with the Easter seal, so go ahead.
Okay. So we have four life skills students that are aging out, they're returning 21. So that means there's no need for Easter seals or Northeast Passage.
Got it, thank you very much.
Thanks, Lisa, thanks, Travis. Other questions on this page? All right, then, we'll move to page six, please. Anything here? All right, then. You can come back if you change your mind. Page seven? We good? All right, page eight? Page nine? I did have a question with regard to, on page nine, the guidance service salary reduction of $150,000 at the high school. Is that the change with regard to the position for Jamie Sala? Or did we eliminate a guidance position?
No, Patty and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but did we have a guidance person retire last year and then shifting around of who was at the middle school and high school?
Yes. So we, through retirement and our hiring, we reduced, and we did have a switch between the high school and the middle school.
And it's the, and it's the outer district coordinator, who used to be charged under this guidance section and is now charged on his own line.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you. My other question had to do with health services for the nurses at CMS and Exeter High School. Is that a reduction in terms of nurses or a reduction in salary? If you could just explain that one to us, we would appreciate it.
Sure, I can explain. At the middle school, we had a retirement, Catherine Ganley.
Uh-huh.
And then we had a point two, she worked two days a week. She also resigned to take a full-time job at the hospital. We then hired two new nurses.
Okay. And so that was the difference in salary with $74,000 for CMS?
Yeah.
$76,000, I'm sorry, $615?
Yeah, very well, yeah.
Thank you.
And their first year in the public school.
Oh, okay, gotcha. And Mike, the high school?
We had a retirement and then the hiring that we did, the reduction, yep.
Gotcha. I just want to make sure with everything going on that we were covered medically, okay? Thanks.
Helen, there was also a reduction at the high school on that nurse line of a nurse that was previously needed on the bus.
I see, oh, okay.
No longer needed either.
All right, then, thank you so much. Other questions on page nine? All ready, we'll move to page 10.
Helen, this is Kimberly, can we just bookmark for me the ELO coordinator job on that line item or wherever that lives? Can you just let me know?
Sure. ELO, we haven't gotten that, have we? On her phone, so she's.
I don't know, I'm.
Do you have those pages in front of you, Kim?
Yeah, I'm flipping through the PDF.
Gotcha, all right. Okay, I'll keep an eye out. I don't think we've gotten to an ELO position, have we yet?
I don't remember seeing it yet. Okay, we can all just.
No, no, I'll keep an eye out for you, thank you. Psychologist salary at the high school, a reduction of $53,402?
Retirement.
That was a retirement? Were they replaced?
Mm-hmm.
They were, okay, thank you. So we're seeing these figures of these savings based on the early retirement option that we gave our faculty last year, which is good to see, as long as we're not understaffing. That's, you know, I just want to make sure we're good to go on that, thank you.
We won't see it again next year, but.
Probably not, no, but we did, that's what we anticipated, you're right, Helen, thank you. Anything else on page 10? We're a third of the way through. Page 11? Page 12? Travis?
Thank you, Helen. The computer equipment new, the reduction of $171,000? Was that the Chromebook purchase?
Oh, that's where we, in the last meeting, if you remember, we presented where we were going to take the technology out of year-end funds from the current year.
Right.
So it would be less in this budget.
But this is purchasing next year's freshman Chromebooks, not the current freshman year's Chromebooks.
Right, but at the end of this year, we would pre-purchase the Chromebooks for the following freshman year.
But did we discuss that becoming a regular course of action out of surplus money as opposed to budgeting it? I thought that was just the one time due to COVID situation?
I believe, Dr. Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, we talked about it in the last public meeting when we presented the budget and why we reduced the technology lines in this budget to purchase technology at the end of this year for next year.
Yeah, we did bring that up, and we talked about it because it worked so well, this most recent budget, that we thought it could be used to help defray the increase in next year's budget by following suit. That was, that was the only thinking behind it.
Yeah, no, my apologies if I missed that conversation. I guess just to have noted, Helen, that, I mean, I think we did it this past year because of the situation we knew we were going to be in and needing to make sure we had, you know, monies freed up in this budget if we needed them. When we have a, it's just my personal opinion, when we have a known expense every year, it really is a budgetary item. It's nice to take 171,000 out of the budget, but we know we're spending it next year for Chromebooks for the incoming freshman class. So maybe in future years, that should go back into the budget. That's just my personal thought.
Thanks, Travis. Bob, question?
Yes, actually, it's on page 11, sorry. And I'm a little confused with curriculum coordinator. It says curriculum coordinator six, and then it says curriculum support, curriculum support salary. Could somebody just explain? I know there's two curriculum coordinators, one for the high school, one for the CMS. And they both have support staff? But what's curriculum coordinator six? That's the.
So there's one, there's only one curriculum coordinator, Bob, for cooperative. And that would be the salary, the support and the expense. So those are for materials and for training and for paying staff to do curriculum work either during vacation time or during their summer when the school, the two schools coordinate the curriculum development work. All of that would fall under that Office of Curriculum. That's Ann Adwin, who leads that effort, six to 12.
So that's one position, six to 12, okay, thank you.
Just cut off the dash 12.
Yeah, yeah. Got it, thanks.
Thank you. Anything else on page 12? All right, then, we'll move to page 13.
We need to make these numbers a little bigger for us.
For those of us who.
They're all blurring together.
Okay, question on the school board legal expenses for CMS and EHS?
The increase is relative to our negotiations process. As you know, Dr. Campbell retired and is on contract with us still until the end of December. He was the liaison and managed all of our negotiations, cooperative included. Now that we've moved toward a Director of Human Resource model, which is far less an expense for the operations end of it, we still need to have money set aside for any negotiations that we need to do with the cooperative next year. We've built that line up so that we would be able to continue negotiations should the current negotiations process not be completed in time.
Thank you, David.
Sure.
Any other questions with regard to page 13? Paul?
Thank you, Helen. So near the bottom of this page, this, this page has the line item for the new DEIJ salary. And I thought, you know, given that it's a new expense for the district, it made sense to give Dr. Ryan an opportunity to talk about, you know, the need for that position and, you know, specifically why it's, it's in our best interest to have somebody full-time in-house as opposed to using a consultant, that type of thing.
So thank you for that, Paul, I appreciate that. I, I don't think that there's anything more important to teach our students right now than how they can understand the world around them based on the world that they're living in. And what I mean by that is, as you know, we've entered a phase of a lot of events, news, activities, at the national, regional, state, and local level, that calls. activities at the national, regional, state and local level that calls attention to race and racial issues that have cropped up just in the last six to eight months. Those race issues have been there for four hundred and six years. And for us to not embrace the opportunity to be able to educate our students as well as our staff members, our board members and the community members on issues of race and how we identify ourselves, either as white, black, Latino, brown, it's, 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 I think imperative that we dig into that work. We've started to do a lot of that work here in the cooperative and we've done it SAU-wide this year. Last year, Exeter School District really made the space for it to happen within Lincoln Street and Main Street School with their diversity, equity, inclusion and justice committees that have worked very hard. They've developed a strategic plan to really advance opportunities for more students and staff to learn about valuing all human differences. And that's where the inclusion and justice part comes in, that we believe that when our students graduate from high school, they're going to go off into a world that may look very unlike where they grew up. And we want to be sure that they have that opportunity to, to flex their, their anti-race and anti-bias muscles and learn about working within a global community. I don't think that we give our students enough opportunity to do that. And I think the position is well warranted to be able to lead those efforts. We currently have a diversity, equity, inclusion and justice team in each of our schools. It's a growing number of people who are on each of those teams. We've had two workshops just in the last month led by a consultant who actually is on staff at Phillips Exeter Academy. We've established a great thought partner network with the Director of Multicultural Affairs as well as the Chief Diversity and Equity Officer on their campus. And we've now reached out to the School of Education at UNH and they're interested in getting our assistance and helping them develop a track within their administration certification program, the graduate doctoral level or the EDS level, excuse me, on diversity and equity issues in leadership. Because something we're not able to do really is to develop our equity-centered leadership skills without the tools and the opportunities to do so. It's far past the time that we embrace the opportunity to have somebody lead this effort. There, there is a growing number of community members who would very much like to see this position in place so that we can expand the efforts throughout the community. I know that there are a few groups, the affinity groups within the Exeter School District, as well as the racial unity team that are in support of this position and want to assist and network and collaborate as well. And so that's where we've developed the position from. That would be the origin of the position. We've begun doing our research on developing the about us and why for, in terms of an overview of the programming, as well as a job description that continues to be developed. And we've reached out to some DEIJ professionals at the secondary and post-secondary level and other areas to assist us in developing that job description. So that's, that's really a lot of it in a nutshell right there.
Thanks, David. Any other questions or comments relative to this position? I, I would like to say that, you know, I, I know that we're dealing with economic issues clearly that are facing our district, yet at the same time, we're also dealing with issues that are related to this particular topic, that it's a silent group, if you will. I hear from a number of people in this community, parents of youngsters who are biracial, who deal with, I won't even go into the specifics of what I hear from them, and it's, it's very sad. And I, I think because of the fact that we are so insulated, if you will, that there is a need for better education for our youngsters and I, I definitely would support this. I do have a question relative to it, David. My understanding is the person who, now maybe I'm wrong on this. The person who is coming on board would be coordinating K-12 or just the co-op?
It would be a coordination of K-12. So there would be the way that we had structured is we'd look for workspace within the SA, either the SAU office or one of the schools to start. And then, but doing programming K to 12 as funded through the cooperative. And the reason that we thought the cooperative budget was the correct place for it was through the assessment that the six elementary towns currently pay into the cooperative budget, that it would be supported that way.
Thank you. Maggie?
Yeah, I'm just curious, did I miss something? So do we have somebody already in mind to do this?
We do not.
Oh, okay.
We do not. This will be a search process that would happen after the March vote. In the event that the budget is not approved, we wouldn't then go forward with the position. So we have to wait until March before we can even launch the, the search.
Gotcha. Thanks, David.
So the actual increase, based on what Molly told us earlier, is actually eleven thousand plus because of the elimination of the other position. So that would mean, am I right on that, Molly?
Yeah, that is correct. And just keep in mind, on this page thirteen is just the salary portion. That's all are in the benefit section at the end.
Oh, I see. All right. Thank you. Um, yes, Bob? Bob, you're muted.
You just said what I'm concerned about, and that is, I understand when we're dealing with dollars and cents, that we're dealing with the budget, that, that this new position is not a position available because we're terminating a CMS teacher. This is two very different people, two very, very different issues. Personal finance is going to be maintained in a different manner at the CMS and will still be covered. This new position is something the district badly needs, and I think that the whole area needs it. I'm very supportive of it. So I liked the idea of hiring the position anyways, but I'm concerned about the way it looks, that we're getting rid of one to get the other, and I, I just, I'm not in favor of that presentation.
Thanks, Bob. Any other comments with regard to this position or questions? Maggie?
I'm sorry, I, are we, do we have to vote on this?
No, no, we're just, tonight, we're just going through, final decisions will be made the night of the budget hearing on January fifth, if there's any, going to be any changes.
But, but final decisions about this position or is that, is that a decision that the superintendent and the administration makes?
So any new position that goes into the budget has to be approved by the board. And the board will approve it when they vote for the budget, when this board votes for that budget to send it on to public hearing.
Is part of our package of positions?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you. Okay.
Thanks, Maggie. Good question. Anybody else on particular, with regard to this position? Anything else on page fourteen? Yes, Travis?
Not nearly as important as the previous topic, but an increase of twenty-three thousand dollars on copier expenses as we try to go more digital and use less paper? Mike, that was EHS too, so.
Travis, if you look about eight lines above, you're going to see a line with a negative twenty-four thousand dollars, which is called admin maintenance contracted.
I got you. Okay.
It's a move.
Yep, thank you. Here, I was going to give Mike a hard time for wasting more paper.
There you go. On page fourteen, what's bad debt?
Shall I correct me if I'm wrong? Is that the, is that the food service bad debt?
Yeah, when the district has to pay for the food service.
Not collected.
Yep. Not collected from other districts? Is that what that is?
No, no, no. No children goes hungry, and so if the parents don't pay it at the end of the year.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. Okay, thank you.
Helen, if I could though, that's under telecommunications.
Oh.
Bad debt telecom.
Falls under telecommunications.
Communications with parents to pay the debt.
That could be.
Okay, I hear you. Okay, thanks. Good point, Travis. All right.
Any other questions on page fourteen? All right then, page fifteen? I have a question about, I'm sorry, Travis, you go ahead. I didn't see your hand up. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, that's fine. I just, so the, similar to like a food service, a lot of these, these COVID supply line items, we have to budget for them to be able to spend any federal or state money that comes our way, correct?
Yes.
Oh, okay. That was my question. I was wondering if, because we had set money aside this year, you know, for COVID-related, and of course, the year's not over yet, but I didn't know if there was any way that that money could be used for next year, but I totally understand now. Thank you.
Yeah, so this is the money where we're projecting a certain dollar value per child to maintain cleaning in case COVID doesn't go away.
Right.
And there are dot, dot, dots instead of percentages because it's going from zero to the number, so it's kind of infinity percentage.
Okay then, thank you very much. Paul?
Towards the top of the page, the line item for custodial services for SST is up considerably, it's a hundred and forty percent. I was just curious as to why that was.
So Sharon, I remember I sent you the email on this. Do you still have that description as to what that was? Um.
I think was that it was an additional person.
One person.
That we had not, we had not been budgeting for that second person who was with SST.
That's.
And we've now made the budget true on that.
Yeah, that was actually just kind of correcting it because we were only budgeted before for the night shift. And we do have, you know, help during the day. So it's not really an increase because really SST just kind of got a nice deal for the last few years.
Thank you, Sharon. Other questions on page fifteen? Page sixteen? Utilities increase at the Tuck Learning Center, fifty-eight thousand five hundred increase.
So that's, um, again, where Sharon was kind of getting a sweet deal before. So the line right below it is, so it's going down in SST but going up in TLC because the distribution wasn't correct before.
Okay. I thought maybe it was because Mike Morgan wasn't turning the lights off anymore every time you walked.
Oh, I do that.
Remember that?
You can ask any one of these people.
I know you do.
I constantly ask if I'm at home.
Mike would constantly turn the lights up, or we would be working in a room with one light on and we could barely read our, do you remember that? Okay, I digress. I'm sorry. Anything else on page sixteen?
Helen, I do have his floor lamps on right now in my office.
All right. I see that. We good to go on sixteen?
Yep.
All right, how about seventeen? Is the sped transportation at the high school a hundred and thirty-eight thousand four seventy-two for additional needs for students, Helen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Other questions on seventeen? Paul and then Travis?
Thank you. Was hoping for an explanation on the two lines for homeless transportation and explanation of specifically what that's for and also why we have two lines for it.
Mike, answer why it's two lines. One is where it says twenty and thirty, one's middle school, one's high school.
So we're responsible for transporting students. Sometimes we get to share that cost with another district depending on where the student lived previously. But we have to provide transportation for students who are homeless. And sometimes they're in our community, but they might be going back to another community to school. Like Seco's Family Promise has many families there. They're all located, that facility is located in Stratum, but those students, I know, Exeter now, it was Stratum, Exeter. And so they may be going to a variety of places, but we, we transport them and most likely share the cost with the district that they previously were in.
And Paul, you can see we've had actual expenses, so the second column is actuals for the nineteen-twenty year. It's just now budgeting for that.
Okay, and I imagine that's year to year based on what student need happens to be at that time.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Federal legislation as well, Paul. McKinney-Vento Act, it drives what we have to do, so.
Travis, you had a question?
Thank you, Helen. So the maintenance project's up forty thousand dollars. Does Rusty have specific projects that he's budgeting for, that he's planned? And Paul, you probably know more about this than I do, but I'm assuming that's just known projects for the, the next school year.
Yep, so we restored it back to, because it was always previously five hundred thousand before. We dropped it to four sixty last year. Rusty does have the list of projects that make up the five hundred thousand. Rusty, if you wanted to talk to any of the major projects?
Sure. So the ones we're hoping to do would be continuing the paving that we started at the high school. We have the security upgrade. It's sort of vague in that description. We keep it that way because it is a security upgrade at CMS. That was fifty thousand. Copper replacement at CMS, courtyard pavers at, at the high school. A stairwell on the gable overhang at CMS. Some sidewalk and curbing. Once the project is done at CMS, they'll do a lot of the paving, obviously in the back, but we'll continue to restore where it's in pretty tough shape towards the front of the school. The fence at the high school, but in the stadium on the home side. And we're looking to add one extra well for the irrigation system at the high school as well.
Thank you, Rusty.
Welcome.
Was that Travis? Any other questions on this page? All right, seen, and we'll move on to page eighteen. My question just dealt with the retirement expense for CMS, EHS and SST. Is that anticipating for next year, those retirements that will require funding from our district?
No, Helen, that's the New Hampshire contribution change in retirement rate?
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Okay. And that went up significantly, didn't it? Yeah, okay. Any other questions on page eighteen? Page nineteen? Yes, Travis?
Molly, when is the bond up at the high school? It's close, right?
Yeah, it's close. I want to, I want to say there's only one or two more years. I, I don't have the bond schedule in front, in front of me, but it is close.
Yeah, I don't need to, I just thought it was close. I can't believe it's, that building is already almost paid off.
I know. It's amazing. I remember when I voted for it.
It looks like the bond year is oh three, oh four, so we could probably anticipate two years from now on a twenty-year note, so.
Great.
And Helen, if I could, credit to Rusty and Mike and the whole team. It still looks like a brand-new high school.
It does, absolutely. I would agree. Actually, I have to say that about maybe two years ago, we had family visiting and we brought them to one of the. we brought them to one of the basketball games and they, they live in New Jersey. And I have to say to you that as they walked through the building, they were drooling with envy. They could not believe what a beautiful school we have. And I just want to share that. It was, you know, quite, quite a, an eye opener for them. So, all right. Anything else on page 19? Yes, Travis?
I'm sorry, Helen, I guess just a question maybe procedurally for you or Dr. Ryan. At some point before we vote on a budget, we need to make a decision on how we're going to do the G-Bex funding, correct? Because we can't leave it in the budget and discuss a warrant on the same night. So that'll take place later. Dr. Ryan, is that how we're going to handle that?
Correct. I would think that at our next board meeting on the 15th, that's, you will want to come out of our meeting that night with a vote on a number that we can send forth to public hearing in January, because I think it's January 6th, if I'm not mistaken, for our public hearing.
I think it's January 5th, David, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep. Sorry.
No, no, no. There's so many days.
December 22nd reserved as well as a tentative budget-related meeting in the event that we don't get to a number on the 15th. So everything will have to be settled prior to, in the public hearing, we have posting requirements relative to that as well. So before we break for Christmas, we'll have to decide on everything.
Great. Thanks, Travis. Good question. How about page 20?
So Helen, I just want to remind everyone, so for the federal funds, so pages 20 all the way to 25, we have budget, the 400,000 right in the center, but it's not on all the individual line items.
Right.
On page 25, you'll, you might want to just flip to page 25. Three quarters of the way down shows all of federal funds together.
Oh, I see. Okay. So we're on page 25 now. Thank you. Bob?
Yeah, I was just wondering, is, is, when you say federal funds, is that including also the updated COVID, COVID funds we're getting?
No, these are the adult education programs and Michelle, I don't know if she, oh yeah.
Okay.
If she wants to talk to anything about it.
I know every year, like you shared in our past meetings, the revenues really support our expenses in the adult ed program. So we really don't run without those federal dollars. So we continue to go after those and we continue to look for additional funding. We get approximately close to 300,000 a year that helps support our programs.
Thanks, Michelle. Does that help you, Bob?
Yes, very much so.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else on page 25? 26?
And I just want to remind everyone for the food service fund, again, we budget for it all in one line on page 29.
Yeah.
Okay. Right. Again, there's no change to the food service fund. It's just on.
So we're looking at 29, ladies and gentlemen. Any questions on there? And we were at, we are at the last page, page 30. Any other questions in general or comments in general? Travis?
I'm trying to scroll back up to all of those expenses that we can't control, like the New Hampshire State Retirement and FICA and whatnot. But Molly, do you have any sense? I mean, the total budget increase is 1.361. If I'm remembering correctly, I mean, almost all of that is budgeted items that we, quite frankly, don't control. I mean, the state retirement alone was close to a million dollars. Is that right?
Yeah, yeah.
Page 18 for the retirement expenses. Between the healthcare and the New Hampshire retirement increases, Travis, I think it accounts for 1.2 and a half.
Right. So I guess my, my, my comment, and again, I mean, this is a flat, it's, it's almost, it's borderline a, a reduced budget based on what we can control. I mean, it's obviously, we have to pay those expenses, but it's not, not an option. And Melissa, hopefully you can fix that for us when you get up to Concord, but for, for right now, it is what it is. So, you know, we, we had no say in the matter of 1.25 million dollars of this increase.
Yeah. And Travis, I think if you look on the pivot that I put in your table, it's just called general fund. It's one right before general fund benefits that outlines exactly what you're saying. The increase is 1.361. Insurance FICA retirement is 1.388.
Right.
So that's highlights exactly what you just said.
I just think it's important that we can articulate that because what we could control, you know, Dr. Ryan and Molly and the whole team, you know, Mike and Patty, you know, everybody, Helen, Michelle, Sharon did a pretty darn good job staying as tight as they possibly could.
You know, it's funny, Travis, when I was going over this budget the last couple of days, I came to the exact same conclusion when I saw the increases that are out of our control. And I was most impressed with how the administration kept things in line in order to prevent this from becoming too, too much of an increase for us. So kudos to all of you. I echo Travis's remarks there. It's, imagine if those increases had not come about, what we would be looking at right now. So that very valid point.
Pile the credit on Mike and Patty and Sonya and Lisa.
Right.
They did all the hard work with their teams and they really came back. They're very proud of the numbers they brought back. If there weren't reductions, they were really close to reductions in the overall. Sharon, you know, did an amazing job when we're trends, you know, taking positions out of Perkins and bringing them back into the operating budget, but we're doing it in a very thoughtful way. Just a tremendous budgeting process and, and the hard work that they put in because they, they saw the increases, to your point, Travis and Helen. And they wanted to be able to still fund what they needed to, but also be able to come in flat. So just overall, just very pleased with the work that went on this budget season with this group.
Thanks, David. Bob, did you have something you wanted to add?
I just, I just want to think it's, it's worth echoing the, the statement again that that retirement expense borne by this local school district is a downshifting of state obligation. It clearly is. That was New Hampshire at work. And we, we really are paying, the local taxpayer is paying for, for state expenses. The state should be owning that. But my second question was, no, it wasn't a question, it was a statement. My second question is, one of the things that troubles me is transportation and the transportation from the standpoint of, I frequently see the great number of cars that come and bring and drop off their, their students, moms and dads bringing students to school. I think it's great. I don't have any problem with that at all. But on the same note, we have buses crisscrossing up, down all the streets in the district. And I, I just, I just urge these bus company and the school to look at almost yearly, if we could combine routes or take, take a serious look at, at trying to eliminate needless, empty buses sometimes on these routes. I just leave that for those people that are in charge.
Thanks, Bob. Anything else before we open the chat box for public input? All right. I just want to remind again, anyone who would like to, to speak on public input, these are just comments, no questions. Please save any questions that you might have for our hearing on January the 5th. So David, would you open that chat box for us, please?
It is now open.
Thank you. I am not seeing anything. Are you, David? I don't see anything coming in.
Nothing yet.
All right. Give it another few seconds here, just in case. I am going to assume that we don't have anyone in the public who would like to make any statements. So we will move on and at this point in time, we are finished with our workshop. We do need to, it's a very, it should be very brief. We do need to move into non-public under chapter 91-a colon 32, letter A. Do I have a motion to move into non-public?
So moved.
Bob, thank you. A second?
Second.
Thanks, Travis. All right. I will poll the board on going into non-public. I. Paul?
Aye. Aye.
Melissa? Kim?
Aye.
Say cap, I don't know who you said.
Maggie?
Aye.
Thank you. Travis?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
I think I thought everybody, so we are in non-public at 8:02. Thank you so much to everybody who attended tonight. We appreciate your effort and all of the hard work. Thank you.
Helen, I'm going to pause the recording.
All right.
Make sure that our participant panel is clear. So just give me just a minute, okay?
Would you guys like to take a? Sure.
Do it again?
Thank you.
I'll make a motion.
Travis, second. Melissa, second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? All right then. We will meet again next Tuesday evening. And David, I will send you a draft agenda tomorrow and Paul, I'll get in touch with you too, as well as Melissa on the financing facilities for next Tuesday night.
Oh, right. Okay.
Okay. Great.
All right. Good night, guys.
Good night, everybody. Have a good evening. Thank you. Good night.